Welcome, everybody, to our eighth 11/2022 City Council Work Session Meeting. And we're going to start a minute early because I'm that efficient. We are going to have a public hearing, and I'm going to read the rules of the public hearing. The hearing shall be presided over by the mayor. After calling the hearing to order, the mayor shall request that parcels, that the parcels of property which are the subject of the zoning proposal be identified and read. Following such identification and reading, the development director's recommendations shall be presented. The mayor and city council shall cause a director's written recommendation to be made part of the record. Proponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning the zoning decision. If all 10 minutes are not used, the proponents remain; time shall be reserved for rebuttal. Opponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning each zoning decision. The presentation times may not be reduced but may be extended by majority vote, provided they are expanded equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak must come to the microphone and give their name and address to the city clerk. Do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. And something else that we do is ask anybody that comes up to this microphone to fill out a name and address card that we can give to our city clerk. So we begin.
Thank you. We begin with a PZ 2022-1021, which is 1758th Street, residential front yard retaining wall. Staff recommendation is approval of the following variance requests: The variance for a retaining wall visible from the public right-of-way to be constructed of wood instead of decorative concrete modular block or base with stone or brick or textured cement masonry. Staff recommends following exhibits and conditions. The development shall be constructed in substantial conformity with Exhibit A by planning and pictures dated and received June 3, 2022. The revisions required by conditions of approval is reviewed and approved by planning and development director. The variance approval is given to bring the recently constructed wooden retaining wall into zoning compliance as constructed only. And the applicant shall remove at the applicant's expense any portion of the wooden retaining wall located in the public right-of-way that public works may require and shall fill inside any areas where the wall is removed if required. So we have here the opposite end is of Eric and Amanda Morgan at 1758th Street, and they are bringing a newly installed replacement wooden retaining wall into zoning compliance. You can see here where the yellow line is, where the wooden retaining wall is. This is also the location of the previous wall that was on-site. Here's the site location. So during construction of this house or remodel construction, there was an existing wooden wall that you can see there in the February of '22 picture. That wall was replaced, but no variance was given for that. It is okay for our code to replace a wall, one for one, but in this case, there was no certainty as to whether the wall was heightened. And just based on looking at the wall, we staff felt it could be brought back or brought to council because it does appear to not be one additional layer to the wall and might receive increased height. That is... It proves that we're prepared for that.
Okay. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this variance?
Do it with the card now. All right. Hi, Amanda Morgan. Let's see. Hello. Can you hear me now? Is that good?
Is there a green light on?
Yeah, yes. I don't know if I hear any difference. Okay.
Just give her one second.
And you might just not get speed.
How much can you roll it over here?
Oh, it's the volume down. Wait, that's not better. I'm not going to see it really well, but yeah. Amanda Morgan, 11758th Street. So I did provide a presentation to also go with this.
I apologize. I did not receive that.
I don't know.
I'm sorry for that.
Okay. That's weird.
John, can we get that out there? Do the best you can.
Okay, that works. So my husband Eric and I bought our home on that 1758th Street back in 2016. The wall was originally built on the property back in 1952. Eric and I loved our first home for five years, living there with our two black wives, Cooper and Tuck. In early 2021, we began to face severe damage and deterioration of the home just due to its old age and lip-hall repair done to it over time. The retaining wall that existed between our house and our next-door neighbor's house, as you can see, had served our needs well while we lived there, even remaining intact after a random drunk driver drove over it in our yard two years ago. But that's a different story for another day. And we had to pay for the damages to my car. Anyway, since Eric and I love the neighborhood and knowing we needed more space for our future growing family, we made the decision back in early 2021 to tear down the old home and build a new one on our lot. When we first determined building plans and budgets with our builder, we knew the house would be stretched financially, though worth it for the investment. So we made the decision to keep the old retaining wall and plan to reevaluate that in a few years. As house construction near completion, one of the last steps was to complete landscaping. So I stopped by the construction site during that process and noticed one of the retaining wall levels had actually been knocked out. We requested the landscaping company fix the damage that had been done, and they ended up actually replacing the retaining wall completely since it couldn't be fixed. Since the new wall was intended to be just a replacement of the existing wall, we didn't think there would be a code compliance issue. So when we received the code violation, we asked the landscaping company for a quote to tear down the new wall and build a wall in compliance with the code. And the estimated price for the cheapest allowed option with concrete modular block would be about $10,000, and a lot of money, especially being over budget already on our entire build. And we also think that concrete modular block would look way worse than a wooden retaining wall. So of course, a stone wall would look great, but that'd be insanely more expensive than $10,000 even. Due to rising construction costs since we began the building process a year and a half ago, the cost of our new home actually ended up being $80,000 over the budget that was provided to us at the start. I think we picked the worst possible time to construct, but you know, hindsight, right? So we're already now struggling to afford our new home with the unexpected cost increases as is, and we just can't afford another $10,000 cost to our budget. So we asked that city council accept our variance request and allow us to keep the newly built wooden retaining wall. And we've received so many compliments from our neighbors already. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I have a timekeeper. I think this, right now, this is not necessary. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this variance request? Please come to the microphone. No? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to this variance request? That's what I thought. So I'm okay with the time. That's it. Thank you very much. Oh, you're right. This will come up again. This is not the time for the city council to comment on this. This is just for public comment. So this will come up again later on in the meeting. All right? So stick around. And have a welcome. Okay. So the second item on the public hearing agenda is number 3551, PZ 2022-1022, 2135, American Industrial Way.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the analysis of the application using the standards and criteria found in UVO, staff does recommend approval of following variance requests. Variance one, or first variance request, variance from Chapter 4, Section B in the downtown Chancery Town Center Plan Development Pattern Book to allow a ground sign between the building and the street. Also a variance for Chapter 4, Section B, to allow a ground sign to be located 34 feet from the right-of-way instead of 50 feet. And a variance from the UVO to allow one additional sign on the building facade less than 200 square, 200 feet in length. Staff also recommends a withdrawal without prejudice of the following variance request, which is the variance from the UVO Code 260-9 to allow painted or adhered signs to the roof, membrane, or accessory mechanical units. Staff recommends following exhibits and conditions. Exhibit A, site plan dated and received in July 1, 21st, 2022. The sign is shall be in substantial conformity with Exhibit A with the revisions required by conditions of approval and review approved by planning and development director. So this is, again, the tables and chairs building, and 2135, American Industrial Way. And it is the installation, for the installation of monument, style ground sign and wall signs. The adaptive reuse of the office building is expected to be completed this summer. Current variance request for signage only for ground monument signs and two wall signs. As we discussed, the ground monument signs are supposed to be 4 feet tall and 8 feet wide, total of 32 square feet. Construction primarily of reused exterior bricks. And the applicant also proposes to install two wall signs on the east facade of the building, maximum allowed one existing 2135 wall sign on the east facade is 36 square feet. The total square footage of both signs combined on the facade would total no more than the maximum size allowed for a single sign, which is 200 square feet. That means that the tenant wall sign would be a maximum of 164 square feet. The applicant requests approval of those variances as mentioned above, as we mentioned before, to allow a ground sign between the building and the street and to allow a ground sign located 34 feet from the right-of-way instead of 50. And also from the UVO variances to allow a second wall sign. This is the building site plan. You can see the location of the monument sign. The proposed monument sign is here. And the wall sign, they have the 23, 2135, what they have on the side. It is something we wanted to note that the monument sign is very close to the building. And you can see this 10 feet from the building, 34 feet from the right-of-way. Monument sign renderings. And the site location comparison. Here you see the initial location of the other wall sign on the same facade as the 2135. East, southeast, and east, east. And that is all we have.
Thank you, John.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of these variances, please come to the...
Stand.
Thank you.
Here we go. Good evening. My name is Randy Holmes. I'm with the applicant, Seven Oaks Company, and I'm joined here tonight by my business partner, Andrew Pearson, who is here also to help address any questions that may come up. I'll fill out a sheet when I'm done. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for reading our variance applications as well as for your recommendation for approval. And I'm going to try to cut this short because I think that, hopefully, the presentation was somewhat self-explanatory. But these three variance requests are solely because of the existing conditions of the property, which we've tried very hard with y'all's cooperation to maintain. The two variances on the monument sign, first being you're not supposed to have a sign between a building and a road. American Industrial Way curves, and so we've got kind of two front doors. And so the only place to put that that's not between a building and a road would be on the other side of the building in between our neighbor that you couldn't see it from the road. So that was reason number one. The second variance request to go from 50 feet to 34 feet is that simply if you pushed it back 50 feet, you'd be into our parking lot, which we kept that footprint, which was very important. We'd lose parking, which we need every single space that we've got, and hence the variance request to go from 50 down to 34. I will say, you may have noticed from the quick image of the sign, we're going to use reclaimed materials from the building. When we punched windows into the building, we saved a lot of the brick. So that monument sign would be very cool, that'd be made of brick. It's also going to be half the size that we're permitted to by code, so we think it's going to be a nice, nice scale. And then the final variance from the UVO is relative to the two wall signs on the east-facing side, which is our loading dock sign. So today, and before we even got started with this project, the 2135 logo existed. We repainted it just to make it look fresher, but we wanted to leave it just because it's part of the original character. And we simply want the ability for marketing purposes to be allowed to put a tenant name on that sign, highly visible. Obviously, that sign would be subject to approval of all the standards. But we also agree that we would not exceed the total square footage allowed for even one sign, which is 200 square feet. We'll do both of them within the 200. So those are the reasons, to try to maintain the character of the building and the footprint. And I'll reserve the rest of my time to address any comments. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this variance request? Come on up. Anyone wishing to speak against?
No? Okay.
Good. That ends the...
Public hearing portion.
Turn off my phone. That ends the public hearing portion of this meeting. So now, we're going to start our regular, I'm calling our regular meeting to order. So on to announcements and presentations. We have our 2021 audit results presentations.
Okay. Good evening. Thanks for having me. And as I said, I'm going to present the results of the December 31, 2021 audit.
Who are you, a pretty workhorse?
Yeah. That was coming up, but yeah. I'm Josh Durrell. I work for Mullen and Jenkins. We do this city's external audit. We've done it for a number of years. And I'm a director with the firm and kind of help remove the city's overall audit. This is our agenda. I was going to go over Mullen and Jenkins, the engagement team, the results of the audit, get some comments and some recommendations and some financial trends, and then questions at the end. If anybody has any questions, as I'm going, you can go over and stop me. This is a slide about the firm. We do tons of governments, counties, cities, development authorities, state agencies. It's about 30% of the firm's overall practice. Everyone that was assigned to your audit on this slide does nothing but government audits. So we invest fully in governments, spend 100% of my year doing it. I don't do any tax work. So we bring a lot of knowledge and experience to the government industry. And Doug Moses was the partner. He couldn't be here tonight, but he was ultimately responsible for the audit this year. The statements are the responsibility of the city's management. Our objective as your external auditor is to express an opinion. We followed all the generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and we ultimately issued and unmodified opinion, or clean opinion, which is what you were hoping to get. And so as far as we're concerned, based on our testing, the city's financial statements are materially correct. This slide, you know, if I was on council, I want to know if we have any unusual accounting policies or aggressive estimates. We evaluate those. And if you don't, they're pretty standard. They're disclosed in the notes to the financial report. The big ones are your pension. There's a lot of actuarial assumptions and estimates in there. And you know, you use GMA. A lot of cities use that, so they're pretty standard and they're not overly aggressive. There's really not going to be significant error that would influence your statements one way or the other. Here we have a good list of the management. Everybody gives us everything we ask. Well, we get pretty much all the departments, and nothing seems hidden or covered up. We did have a few audit adjustments. They were really small. They didn't make it to a filing or a management comment. They didn't seem significant enough to report to the council. So it was overall a really clean audit, and it's not the norm, for sure. Here, we are independent. We don't do anything other than the external audit. We don't do bookkeeping or any other kind of services that we get paid for that can influence our opinion as your external auditor. And getting into the trends, this is, these are all kind of five years. This is our net position, and it's kind of trended up over the years, the last five years. Most of that is capital in nature, you know, building like these nice facilities. Those become assets. We used our cash to build up our net position, government-wide. Fund balance, kind of similar. The big ones, the general fund, it's kind of crept up over the last few years. You know, the last couple of years, sales taxes and property taxes have been pretty strong with the economies come out of COVID, so we've kind of built that back up. And the blue line is all the other government funds. And most of the big jumps there are the URA fund issuing bonds to, you know, fill our objectives in those redevelopment areas. So that's kind of the big jumps in the blue boxes. As they issue the bonds, they get a bunch of cash, and we ultimately spend it. And it will roll up into the net position on the previous slide as we spend those costs. This slide is probably the most important slide. It shows our fund balance of the general fund as a percentage of our overall annual expenses. And we're pretty much at 100%, which is really strong. The GFOA is kind of the standard setting body for governments, and they recommend two to three months at a minimum. That's 16 to 25%. So we're well above that. We had a healthy fund balance, you know, in our general fund, which is a good thing. And we didn't have any findings. We didn't have a few management comments. We looked at P-card transactions, and we tested 25, 17 of them. We didn't see an approval. It's not to say the approval didn't happen. It just wasn't visible to us. There was no trail of it. So we made a recommendation that we kind of make sure all those get approved. And I think since those transactions occurred, a policy's been in place. And so I'm sure, I think the finance has kind of already addressed this. So I don't think we'll have that going forward. And we did some old outstanding checks here. The state of Georgia says if you got a check that's over five years, you should have sheeted to the state. So just kind of want you to stay on top of those and review our outstanding checks. And when they do get to over five years, we should try to either find the individuals so they can get the money, or we should have turned it over to the state and let them handle it. So nothing huge. We do have new Gatsby coming up, 91. The downtown of Lumen Authority has kind of a debt. It's, they've issued debt for a developer, basically. It's not our debt. We're not responsible for it, but we disclose it in the statements. And we really don't know how much is outstanding. I mean, they issued the bonds, and then ultimately they built the facility, and they start paying them down. And this Gatsby is going to require us to disclose how much is outstanding. That will be effective for your December 31, 2022 audit. So I just want you to kind of get started on contacting whoever can get us that information. I don't think it's going to be difficult to obtain, but we just didn't invest the time in the audit this year because it wasn't necessary. But we'll need that going forward. And the last one we do, continue to highlight cybersecurity in the IT world. It's always front-page news. Just want to make sure we remind the council that it's ever-changing. We need to keep our IT group in training and train our employees for phishing and all these other wild cyber attacks that happen. It's, I've had clients that are extremely large, towns of cities with, you know, 800 residents get attacked. So no one is too big or too small. Just want to keep highlighting that. And Gatsby's always busy. Then next year, we're going to have to do it with Gatsby 87. It deals with leases, and it kind of redefines what a lease is. It's not just going out leasing a copier or a police vehicle. It's kind of any fixed monthly payment that's more than a year. So we need to look at any types of contracts we have with that. The big ones I think about are rents and just any monthly payment. Do we have a contract? Well, we're going to have to book those. We're going to throw an asset up on the books and allow it to be. It's not going to be a huge impact for the city, and we can be on both sides. We can have someone paying us the useless space we have. So we can have a lease, less worry and a less these side of that. So that's a big thing coming up. It's going to impact the overall financial report in the next two years. And we do have a government advisory service group that, I believe, we've talked about before. And they do a lot of neat projects. They deal with budgeting, performance measures, strategy. And they kind of deal with our operational efficiencies. How is each individual department functioning? Are they utilizing their resources in a good way? What can we do better? They do a lot of neat projects. If it's any things that you ever want to know more about, I can kind of connect you with the department that heads that up. And we do continue to provide free CBE to all of our clients. Anyone in the city is welcome to attend those. We give 28 hours of free CBE annually for free those costs to our clients. That's it. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to take them. If you really enjoy working in your city.
Are we your favorite?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Very good.
Great job, as always.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there a man with master finance that has any questions?
Yeah, I do, actually. But as for the city manager, it's not enough for you. Thank you very much. So the purchase card transaction is approval and outstanding checks. This may have brought your attention earlier, and what have you done in securing that since then?
So on the P-cards, we have changed our system, and Julie will probably speak a little bit more than that. I will say that when we switched over to our new bank and started using the cards with that, they have a digital system that we use. In that, I know I personally was, I was taking my receipts and I was attaching that to my item in the card so that they were attached, but I wasn't then putting it in an envelope, a digital envelope for someone to look at. So that was part of that issue. And so we've made sure that those digital envelopes are now part of the process. I hope I said that right. That was my simplistic remembering.
We've also did an internal audit and reviewed our P-cards over the last six months and revamped our P-card policy. And so we have some new rules and regulations that we rolled onto the department heads. So we did that as of effective April 1.
Moving right along. Item number two under announcements and presentations.
Your microphone on. We have a code enforcement update.
Thank you, Mayor. We've asked code enforcement to come tonight and provide an update on their services.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. How you doing today? Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure. I am the code enforcement supervisor, William Robbins. It's nice to meet you guys all in person at the same time. Thank you. So to make up your code enforcement team, like I said, I am the supervisor. I've been a city employee for nine years with the police department and divided with planning and development. I was also with the Cal Police Department for four years. Officer Renato Central has been in the city for six months, and he also is a part of the Cal Police for seven years. Officer Nelson, Officer Lamone Nelson has been with the city of Shalhoub for three years, serving with the city of Shalhoub. And right now, we have a vacant position for the code enforcement coordinator. So what is code enforcement? We all know that it is the process of preventing and inspecting, mitigating nuisance on public and private premises, health, safety, and general. Do not regulate aesthetics, taste, civil disputes, HOA violations, or noise. Normally the noise violations, the police department handles that. But if it's after hours, um, construction, then code enforcement does need to get involved with it. Um, we are, we do have the relationship with the community members and working with the upkeep of the property. Often we are the face of the city, community, direct the contact with the staff and often it becomes one connecting them to other departments. So the process and scope, we all know that code enforcement, it reinforces the city codes, property maintenance, illegal signs, lighting, vehicles, um, illegal businesses, land use, apartment suites program, multifamily annual interior building inspections program, proactive enforcement, delinquent optex and voluntary compliance. Our approach is compliant based with door hangers, warning letters, conversations, daily patrol, notices, non-compliance, violation of code and education with the residential guide. This year we will have our first residential guide to the public and it's going to actually be on the Shelby website. So it's kind of a breakdown of the normal codes that code enforcement comes in contact with. Um, I kind of created a language for the public and to be able to understand other than our, um, community code sections. So my favorite part is the code enforcement by numbers. If you guys look at, we did a breakdown of twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. Um, the total cases monthly is, was in twenty-twenty-one was two hundred and thirty-seven, they jumped from twenty-twenty-two to three nineteen. Um, total violations went up from two twenty-three to two sixty-eight. And citations monthly went from twenty-twenty-one, um, eleven citations and thirteen twenty-twenty-two. Total apartment sweeps, we normally do apartment sweeps once a month. Um, and we just now started the new process of all them commercial sweeps. So we've combined those two and I'll show you later the breakdown of the apartment, um, sweeps. So if you look at twenty-twenty-one, the monthly average and, um, twenty-twenty-two average to May thirty-first, you see that signs, um, went from seventy to seventy-four, um, that's twenty-two percent equally. Um, permits, eighty-seven in twenty-twenty-one and now to forty-eight. Um, that's going to be fourteen percent lower than the twenty-nine percent that we had last year. Junkyard storage has went up thirteen percent from twenty-twenty-one and thirty-two percent, nine percent, um, in twenty-twenty-two. Billcuzz and parking, twenty-six to forty-seven point eight, so it went from nine percent to fourteen percent. Vegetation and grass, this is one of the big ones, especially in the summertime, um, they, they went up as well. Went from seventy-three to one oh one for the year of twenty-twenty-two, went from twenty-three percent to twenty-nine percent. All other violations are included, which went from ten percent to twelve percent. Um, we do have the same number of officers, two officers and a supervisor, um, the increase average went from eighty-seven per month. Um, our twenty-twenty-one optex renewal visits, that was crazy just because of some fact. Um, code enforcement had not touched the optex in a few years. Um, I came on back in September of twenty-twenty and I saw the big impact that no businesses was, was being touched. So it went from sixteen hundred and thirty-two businesses that we had to go and check. Um, out of those sixteen hundreds, we ended up having five hundred and eighty cases because we had a lot of business that moved out of the city. Um, again, the total twenty-two, the twenty-twenty-two apartment sweeps, four hundred and fifty, um, notices of violations altogether. So this, the trend is a significant increase in case related to junk debris, vehicles and vegetation and grass. Um, proactive, um, citations, these have actually went up, um, just because these are our six months totals. Um, if you see from twenty-nineteen all the way from twenty-twenty, code enforcement really didn't write too many citations in twenty-nineteen. It went from nine and then twenty-twenty-two, thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, a hundred and thirty-six. And that number that's one eighteen has changed, it's at one forty-five right now. Proactive building permits, twenty-twenty-nine, I mean, twenty-nineteen went from four, um, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, one hundred and twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one, two hundred and sixty-four. And twenty-twenty-two, within six months, we're at one hundred and forty right now. And those are proactive building permits where code enforcement proactively rides around the city and catch contractor going work without permits. And as we know, that is a safety issue when you're catching unlicensed contractor that's coming inside the city doing that work. Um, proactive occupational tax, like I said, um, none was touched, twenty-nineteen, there was zero. Um, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, I mean, twenty-twenty-two and one, five hundred and eighty. That number has decreased now, we're at five sixteen now. And we touched every single business, we actually just finished that sweep and, um, touched every business in the city. And the way that we handle that is, um, notices of violations is issued to those businesses. That, and that code enforcement case is created, it's never closed until that business has come current with their business license slash occupational tax. Um, the breakdown of our apartment sweeps, uh, Villa Zila's Columbus for apartments had a total of two hundred and eight violations. Dresden Villa's apartments, thirty violations, which they are very small, they only had two buildings in that apartment complex. Blumet Dresden, this is one of the big ones, a hundred and sixty-two violations that had not been touched in several years. We found a lot of fire code violations, I ended up having to contact the fire, um, the Cal Fire Marshal. New, um, Peachtree Apartments was fifty and then our reporting of multifamily annual reporting. Forty-two complexes that we have in the city right now. Um, we only have seven right now of apartments that's, we're waiting on to submit their multifamily code compliance certificates. I hope I'm not taking too long. So the major cases for code enforcement, of course, the burned building across from Dresden Park. Um, that had been sitting out there for a long time, so we ended up having to contact that property owner so we can get this out of here in the south. Um, done with the exchange apartments, if you look over until your right corner, top corner, those were the decks that was eroded and very dangerous. Um, we ended up making them replace every deck inside of that apartment complex. And that is the after photo of that, um, apartment complex. Our biggest case was Bufalage and it's been sitting there for a while. I had cases over there as a police officer and a detective. And to tell you to, to, I collected, once I came on, I collected over a year and a half of evidence because I knew that this case was going to court. And, um, Bufalage had high-powered attorneys and they were going to fight this because they did not want to get rid of it. So we collected enough, um, evidence to, you know, have the judge to favor us in that decision. All right, our new demand for code enforcement is our commercial building sweeps, our vacant property register, uh, registry, which is proposed, which you guys are going to be, um, looking at that later. Um, increase delinquent optex cases, increase engagement with businesses, lighted property ordinance, coffee and code slash, um, neighborhood engagement and again, the residence guide. Um, our new housing unit has grown over nine hundred plus, our new city commercial has grown three hundred and, three hundred thousand square footage in the past three years. This is one of the commercial sweeps we just did, if you look at it, this is going to be a commercial business off of Shelby Downwood Road. Um, this property has been a nuisance for a very long time, ever since I, um, first came over in twenty thirteen as a, a police officer. Um, and there was a lot of high crime area, um, violations in that area. Um, if you can see the elevator didn't work, um, there's multiple damage to the exterior of the building. Um, some illicit discharges, um, openings inside of the buildings, painting, graffiti, all that. I just had a meeting with the new owner of that property and his plan is to put over a million dollars of repairs into that building since doing that, um, commercial sweep. So the scope again is, um, enforcement of the city codes, property maintenance, illegal signs, illegal businesses, apartment sweeps, multifamily annual interior building inspections, um, proactive enforcement, the delinquent optex and Saturday patrol. My guys who come in on Saturday, um, and look for any type of violations, a lot of times it's the signs that is that's when the sign companies are coming inside the city and placing these signs right away. Our two officers cover the entire city north and the south zone, so they're broken up between Savoy all the way down to Shelby Downwood. That'll be the north side and from Shelby, well, Buford Highway and from Buford Highway down to Clamont Road in eighty-five, that'd be our south side. Again, I am your supervisor of code enforcement, um, and this is where, um, the community can make a complaint through our city source app and our MyShelby app. I am the supervisor, William Robbins. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions, I bet you there's going to be more from, uh, just, um, these guys too. So your resident guide is going to be just posted on the city website?
We're waiting talks right now, um, I would love for a pamphlet, but that's going to cost a lot of paperwork. I was thinking if it was an attachment to the, um, website, anybody can go and hit that attachment and be able to print that, that attachment out from their homes or their businesses.
Maybe we could announce that, that exists in the city so that, you know, people can know to look. Um, that's great. Now, we've gone through several iterations of our code enforcement, um, enforcement. And, um, this sounds like a really effective way to do it. It sounds like you, um, the three of you right now are, um, more engaged with our citizens, which I think is absolutely fantastic because that's really necessary. Um, do, do we have, uh, what is our mechanism now for, for complaints, code enforcement complaints, rather? Do we have a, one of those buttons?
As far as what?
As far as for anybody to call in and code enforcement.
Correct, they can either call in, they can email, they can go into the city source app or the MyShelby app.
Okay.
And those, once those complaints have come in, cases are created, it's matched to offices and officers just run to those locations.
And of course they're anonymous.
Some of them, um, and, and they have an option of being anonymous and that. And that's one of the first questions we asked, do you want to remain, remain anonymous? Those who want to, want their names out there, go ahead and place their names and their phone numbers in that report.
And they get secret sort of protection. And, and so do every, does every person that makes a complaint get, get called back?
They, yes, glad you asked that yesterday. And not only do they get a call back, they are actually called back after the case had been closed to let that complaint know what has come about with that case.
I was just going to mention that we are moving to a new website and that that website will have, uh, kind of integrated, uh, uh, the complaint, uh, mechanisms, uh, that we talked about before. So as we transition to that new website, you'll have a place where you can register that complaint. You'll go into our new software, um, go, I think it's called, go pilot.
Pilot.
Um, and that'll be distributed to staff from the website as well.
Okay, that sounds very promising. Anybody else?
No, I, I mean, I just noticed that you did some of the two thousand twenty-two stuff, you did it as an average based on the first seven months. But I think there's probably some things like grass or whatever that's, we're the highest months are included in the average, whereas like in November, December, the average may be much lower. So it may drag some of those average calls in two thousand twenty-two down at the year end.
Correct.
So that's, that makes sense. That's, uh, that was the only thing I noticed, uh, that was just everything, some things would do that, some things would do that. Like they're so separate and stuff.
And, and before ending this, I do want to say that, um, I have a very good team, um, they're very proactive. I'm very big on proactive, kind of from the police department with my old boss back there, chief. Um, but that's one thing when I came over, I wanted to engage more with the public and be more proactive. So everything so far since twenty-twenty of me coming on, um, and, and creating a great team, you get the results that you're getting now.
And what vehicles do y'all have there?
Uh, we have the Ralph force, Ralph, the Toyota Ralph force.
Yeah, so that was the big, my big thing when I first got on council is when we had uniform, police officers and squad cars showing up and I can't tell you how many times I thought and ran like, what's going on over at Miss Berry's house? Or Miss Berry would call like, I woke up, police sit up. So I much prefer this professional, not that the police aren't professional, but it's a different look, it's a different looking deal. It's still professional, but it's still, uh, it's just, it's less intimidating, I guess.
Right.
Yes, so that's what is a, and, and I don't think there was ever any kind of issue with the police, just, it's just that whole, you know, a lot of people get really nervous, the first time I see a police officer show up.
There was one or two.
Yeah. So then, fine, I think we finally got to the kind of look and feel and operation that I tried and tried for a while to get.
I think you're right.
It took a little bit, but yeah, I keep trying, I keep getting it.
I know, we keep, we got it.
I do want to say, William has done a great job with the code enforcement team and, uh, you know, there was an article about dangerous dwellings in the Land Journal Constitution. I think they did reach out to us, they did talk to him about that. Um, and we have done a really good job of making sure, uh, that the apartments, uh, in the city are maintained as he showed to you with some of those, uh, pictures. Uh, and we are very effective with those apartment sweeps, um, as I did finding issues and having them resolved.
Just had a apartment fire recently, so lots of things important.
Correct.
Try to do what can.
And as I was speaking about the Blumet Apartments, you know, um, we had fire marshal, our code enforcement had not been over there doing, getting sleep. So we had a lot of fire codes over there, um, and it, it looked real bad. So they're in progress right now with, um, repairing and fixing everything over there. And also our, our multifamily sweep, like I said, this year is our most profitable year for that interior. Because a lot of times it was hard for code enforcement or any government official to get inside of somebody home. So now we're able to enforce our multifamily inspections. Out of the four, forty-three apartments that we have in the city, right now we only have seven apartments that we're waiting on to submit their multifamily inspections. So that's when a qualified, um, contractor goes in and do that inspections to make sure that that, the interior of that apartment is done up to code.
I, I just want to say thank you because I'm a big believer in the broken windows philosophy and what you do makes sure that our city is safe and doesn't get run down, so thank you for that. Two of the big things I just want to bring up that I hear the most times are treatment. So we have, I, I know probably don't get a lot of people on that actually pull permits on the street. But what is the best way to get in contact to do, because they do quick work and then they're gone? What's the best way to contact code enforcement and to get you guys out quickly to inspect?
It's going to be, um, to have a expedited, please give me a call. Um, anybody listening to the public, um, they can reach me at four seven zero five four two seven four four four. That's four seven zero five four two seven four four four.
And secondarily, uh, I, I saw there's a trend that there's much more violations this year over the previous year, what do you attribute to that?
The growth, we, like I said, the square footage, um, the people, we got more people moving into the city. We got more residential areas and more commercial, so of course when you have that, you're going to get a group of violations. And they're going to continue to rise because Shelby has a growing city.
That's not the answer I was looking for, I thought our code person did a great job, so.
But you've broken that.
I think it's a combination.
You've broken that down as a percentage as well.
Yes.
And, and so that's, that's really probably more important than just the, the sheer numbers. Because the percentages are more representative of our.
Correct.
Right, um, great job, great job.
And it shows in two thousand nineteen, which I guess is before you were in this role.
Yes, I came.
And two thousand nineteen was very low and then two thousand twenty, we all know what was going on in two thousand twenty-two. So I would expect, I don't know, something, uh, it was on the news, I think. Uh, the twenty-one, you know, is when it started swinging up, so we're, we're done with the pandemic and we're kind of like in your full. So we're, we're done with the pandemic and we're kinda like in your full, your program is starting to get its full stride.
When I first came, what I told the city manager, I said, this is not gonna be a year. It's gonna take a couple of years to get the city back to its goals.
I'm surprised my phone hasn't rang or because, you know, that's what a lot of people say. Well, I haven't ever gotten a violation since I've been here for twenty years and all of a sudden I got some guy showing up. So sometimes that happens, but sometimes it just, that's the way that it is, you know?
But it wasn't packing a gun.
Or it didn't go better.
That was the biggest complaint I ever got. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, code enforcement is a very exciting topic, isn't it? We have staff action items. We have under the city clerk approval of minutes for the city council public hearing room session July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, held at six o'clock. Anybody wanna make any changes? Okay. Approval of minutes. City council regular meeting, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, approval of minutes. Anybody wanna make any changes there? We only have two meetings that we have to look at on this particular docket under the city manager. Number one, we have the Marda Station mural.
Good evening. This design may look a little familiar to folks in the community and she's a member of the City Council. It was created by artist Lauren Stumber. She originally submitted her work for consideration as a mural on this building that we're in this evening. She was not selected, she was one of the four finalists, but was not selected for this site. And over the last several months, we've continued to consider her concept and consider where an appropriate place in the community may be. The Marda Commission has discussed her design and we've also discussed for several months partnering with Marda for installation of a mural at the station facing Peachtree Road. So recently, we've been in conversation with those partners at Marda and we've reached an agreement on cost sharing so that the city of Shandley and Marda can partner to add new public art in our downtown. So the proposed mural size is roughly seventy-five by fifteen feet, just over a thousand square feet of new public art that we brought to our downtown. Total cost of installation for that area is thirty-four thousand dollars. And Marda is open to a seventy-five, twenty-five cost share. That totals twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars from the Public Arts Commission budget, which is included in the budget that was approved for this fiscal year. Marda's cost is eight thousand, five hundred dollars. They'll also provide pressure washing to prepare the site, a lifting installation, which is not an insignificant cost, as well as the final sealant to preserve the mural. So this is a concept that Lauren has updated for that space. You can kinda see roughly from the image at the top, the placement. We did do a site walkthrough a couple of weeks ago with the Marda Art Ground team as well as artists. We may adjust this a little bit just to ensure that we're filling as much space as possible and adapting the design. But on the agenda for consideration at the meeting, we have an agreement for our terms with Marda as well as an agreement with the artists to move forward. Anticipated timeline following council action would be installation in September based on the artist's availability. And she anticipate being completed by early October, which means it would be in place before the case of Shandley.
Personally, I think it's beautiful. Let me ask you something. So this is on where the buses go through on Peachtree Road side. What is the surface of that? Is that that extruded concrete kind of column looking stuff?
It is. We, uh, when we did the site visit, we realized there's a lot of uniqueness there, including some pillars with some different texture. But the majority of the project will be installed on smooth concrete walls. There are also some tiling within that. So that's, you know, this is a full rectangular block. We talked about potentially implementing some of those elements. The artists actually had some ideas about potentially painting on some columns and being able to extend it a little bit further into that entry plaza. If you're coming into the station that way, there's a big plaza from the parking area and an entryway as you walk down that breezeway. So we've talked about incorporating some of those elements to make it even more of a large piece.
I have no other questions. Nothing is beautiful. From where I sit, anybody else? Nope. All right. Moving right along. Thank you, Mercy. Number two, under city manager, Shallowford Road scoping study.
Thank you, Mayor. We have with us today, we consult, who will be presenting this. Last year, we did have, last year, we did have the request of City of Dorville provide half of the match for a project to look at Shallowford corridor and looking at improvements for that.
Hi, I'm Stephen Hopper. I'm with Stand Tech Consulting. You guys might be familiar with my colleague Joel Mann, who did the mobility study for Shandley as well. We've been partnering, partnering a lot with both Dorville, Shandley and C I E on a number of projects and making sure that those all work together. On the Shallowford scoping study, this project is obviously important, both to the city of Dorville as well as you guys. I don't have a clear map with me, but this project goes from Shandley Dunwoodie on Shallowford Road all the way up to New Peachtree Road towards the new Marda Station where Dorville's installing their new streetscape piece right in front of that Marda Station. That everything to the west, for the most part, west and north on Shallowford Road is within this city of Shandley limits. And everything to the east and south is really Dorville. Until you get up into New Peachtree Road, Dorville, United Elementary Schools, obviously right there in my corner. The specifics about the different fundings and partnerships, I think Naomi excited him up with the city of Dorville. She's not here tonight, but you follow with her. We have a full package of both the vision document and the draft G dot concept report that we did, which is more directed towards the state and funding potential. But Naomi was very clear that she was hoping that we could share this with you all to know where the project stood, what we're looking at, and kinda how they're gonna be progressing. So we, there were two products out of this. One was a vision report, which is more of an outward facing document that you all can use to kinda market and let people know what the project is gonna be. And then the second document is the draft G dot concept report, the nuts and bolts of engineering elements that the state and G dot are more interested in. Just to break into, we just, we followed our standard design practice. We, we jumped into data gathering and analysis. Really, what does this corridor wanna be for both cities? Uh, there's a lot. It leads right into Dorville. Buford Highway is not necessarily the front road they want as, as far as for pedestrians and safe vehicular relationships. So Shallowford Road really becomes that. It also becomes, this area becomes a connection to their Marda Station, the elementary school, commercial and residential for them and you all as well. And New Peachtree Road obviously leads right back up to the Marda Station that we're just talking about. So we, there's some of the issues that we found there in our data collection, data collection, which is looking at accessibility and what do people experience right now? Most of those scenarios there you see are unfavorable. The elementary school did put in a mid-block crossing. That was pretty well done. It makes a safe crossing for the students. Some of those apartment complexes. Accessibility is an issue. You can see this cow pass beyond that utility pole. Wheelchairs and other limitations are not really counted for in, in the current situation. We also wanted to look at the mobility. Who uses the corridor? How do they use the corridors? We look at traffic counts, pedestrian counts. Uh, we, we had bus ridership counts. There's four stops along the corridor, plus obviously the, the train station itself. And then we really wanted to figure out how pedestrians are accessing this. And so this was, this is a walk map. A lot of these details are really more spelled out in the documents that you all have, in the vision document and in the G dot concept report, if, if you wanna get a little bit more information about some of these. And then we also looked at some of the analytics. And that was actually really looking, diving hard into those, some of those traffic counts, what works, some of the crash data. The map to the right, just pure visually, you can kinda tell up near north Pete, uh, New Peachtree up at the top of the screen, has a lot of wrecks. Down near Buford, there's a lot of wrecks. And then the wrecks in between were people pulling out because the speeds are pretty high on Shallowford Road and people pulling out and getting rear ended. Buford Highway is obviously kind of the elephant in the room on this project. That is a state route. Y'all are more than aware. And massive improvements in Buford Highway really require a lot of state interaction. We tried to evaluate what opportunities there were without ma- making major changes at the state level where the state would push back. Then we dove into what the concept would be and addressing some of those areas of concerns. And really, the pedestrian was the main target for this project, but we wanted to make sure that vehicles and traffic along the corridor would remain the same level of service, especially with the MMIP project coming off two eighty-five, it still does, coming off right there, New Peachtree, and where that traffic would go and how that would operate with cut-throughs both into Dorville as well as some New Peachtree towards Shandley. Uh, so we looked at a couple of different options in different areas. You can see that there at New Peachtree on the bottom of the screen, we evaluated what a roundabout would look like, what those extents of impacts would be. Down at Shandley Dunwoodie, we kinda looked at reorienting that road with Shallowford that's south of Buford, what that would do. So we're starting to conceptualize, is this, is this gonna work? So we wanna test this out. And from that, we, we defined a couple of character areas along the corridor. There were key elements of areas that we wanted to further test and make sure that those areas, if, if some of the improvements worked in those areas, we could apply them elsewhere on the corridor. Buford Highway, is that obviously a big one there, right around Asian Square and Elementary School and then obviously New Peachtree with the way that that current traffic signal works? We then kinda really started to define some of the concepts. And when we get into this, now we're actually testing, these are the pretty pictures, obviously, but behind the scenes, our engineers and planners and traffic engineers are kinda testing the data and making sure that if we close off these roads or if we change a turn signal or, or change the timing of the signals, that that's all gonna work together and that we're not causing a bigger problem than what we started with. Again, some of the proposed improvements developed a little bit further. And then an element that was very important to us is, is that a lot of times we find that we all wait to the end of the project and the public hasn't even heard about it. G dot does require a P I O H meeting. Those are very sparsely attended and a lot of times it's only the folks that are like most concerned. Uh, one thing that we like to do is really kinda get out into the public. So we went to the Dorville Christmas tree lighting. We got a lot of response there. You just kinda catch people off guard a little bit, get some real comments without somebody feeling like they had to go like on Tuesday night and get dressed up for a formal meeting. So we got a lot of really good comments from locals who use the corridor, um, from kind of north Dorville all the way down into Shandley that were attending that event. And then we did hold a P I O H style meeting that this project is not within the purview of G dot yet. So this did not warrant like any true P I O H meeting, but we did follow those general guidelines. You can see, those of you that know Joel Mann, kinda there on the right, he was, he's a big part of this as well, working with Mayor Guermin, who's in those pictures as well, from Dorville. We held that meeting at CPACs, I'm gonna get it wrong, the Pan, Center for Pan Asian. And it's right on the Shallowford corridor. So we got some good feedback from some of the patrons of that center as well as some of the local residents. Then finally, just developing the concept to get it really kinda polished off where there's some of the opportunities, public parks, kinda some of, what, what kinda elements can be applied to it to kinda create that gateway feel and create the character of the area and get people excited about what's gonna be going on. Then finally, moving into that G F concept report, I'm sure you guys have seen these. They're fairly boring documents, very, not as exciting as what I was just showing you. But we did go ahead and provide a draft version of this. And what that does is that when you go to request funding, that ensures that when G dot and A R C see these documents, that, okay, this is already being gone through. The, it could be something as small as like the radius of a, a curb cut, all up to like speed limits or certain design criteria that we've already thought through. Now, G dot will have a different phase for this and they will make sure that all of this checks off with them. But when they see this kinda document completed, they know that we thought this through. We did interact with G dot as well, let them know this party was coming. They did provide Naomi a letter of support that she provided to A R C with the request for funding. And then again, when you see in a pretty standard G dot concept report, you start getting into some very technical cross-sections and cost estimates. And then finally, like very detailed schematics that really have a lot of things figured out that again, the state and A R C would wanna see and make sure that you thought these things through and that the project is eligible for not just funding, but it's, that the project will move on without major snags. It's my understanding that Naomi wants to make you, that Naomi and the city wanted to make sure that you all were aware of the project, where we were. We're wrapping this up. This is complete. They are applying for funding for this. But you guys are a big partner in this. This, this corridor is in your purview and we're excited about the potential for the corridor. I'm hoping for any, if you have any questions or comments, I will say though, again, if you want a lot of more detailed information, that, that those documents that we provided have a lot more of that meaning to it.
Thank you very much. I think this is really good stuff. I think it's high time that Shallowford Road got its, got some attention paid. Anybody?
Do you have a question about the timeline? What are you guys looking at in the future out of the same thing regarding that document?
With the application that went into A R C, I believe that that L C I grant money should be announced this year. In the past, those announcements have been delayed. But if it were announced this year, the proposal for engineering services could go out as soon as the end of this year or early into next year. That would enter G dot's purview. Most projects that enter that, something you may know is probably about three years out before shovel goes into the ground. Uh, so you're probably looking at about three to three and a half years before you see any equipment out there on Shallowford Road.
Quick follow-up question on that as well as from a, from a financial standpoint, what are you guys all parking on this right now?
There was a number, I will answer your question. But there were a number of factors with this and we were trying to limit the amount of right-of-way impacts. So that's where we had our largest vary, varying values. Right now, including right-of-way, we're somewhere around three million dollars. The, as we get further into the engineering process, if we can reduce that, those right-of-way impacts even more, there is a potential for that number to be reduced. If, if something comes up where a property owner, or there was a situation where the projects had, had something that needed to be mitigated, that, that cost could potentially go up. But I wanted to be careful how I answered that.
And I would just like to clarify, you said that the application was going in? Has it already been completed?
I, I believe she's already submitted that to A R C.
This is the application for engineering, correct?
Yes.
For, for grants?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The application for engineering, there would then be another application for construction.
Construction.
Right.
And then I was trying to follow along and trying to keep the tally in my head, but and I don't wanna be nitpicky, but just curious, how much of this is actually in Shandley? The big projects anyway versus how many? It looked like a lot of the big intersection improvements were in Dorville completely. Is that, I mean, or are they, are they, I mean, cause some, I mean, I still don't know how, what it's paying for. Who's paying? Are we paying seventy-five, fifty? We don't know yet. We don't have a cost or, you know, just maybe that's just a question for a later day.
Remember last month when we were told that Dorville said that Sh- Shallowford was held?
I'm not exactly sure how the price breaks out by. I'm not exactly sure how the price breaks out by city or how that is to be determined, uh intersection uh lays out. I do know, you know, as you mentioned, that large roundabout is, looks to be completely in Dorville, so I'm not exactly sure how the rest of it plays out.
I think if I could give a rough estimate, I would say just the, looking at the land and the properties, it would probably be about forty percent Shandley because it does kind of wrap around on the north end of the project where that concept for the roundabout, and to be clear, uh we found that the roundabout is probably gonna be too costly, so we teed up the intersection and got rid of the wild kind of free-flow triangular intersection that exists there today. Um so that would be a T-intersection and we would just uh move the signal. And so it wouldn't be the full cost of a roundabout. Um but once you get up into that area where the roundabout is, that is Dorville, but then as you travel south and west.
I'm not trying to nitpick, I'm just, just kind of curious, the general breakdown, obviously, what a long way from knowing how much it's gonna cost.
So is this something that will be partly funded by Dorville, partly funded by Shandley, and partly funded by G-DOT?
I will add that I believe on this study, I, I don't know the numbers, um but I believe the C I D was a partner as well in this. Um there's different ways to do this, you, but for the most part, usually, uh local municipalities will apply for um uh some assistance with engineering and that's an eighty-twenty split, but again, I'm sure you guys are used to. And construction as well would probably be another eighty-twenty split. But that twenty split uh can be kind of how, however you guys divvy it up. And I don't know what those percentages would be between you all and Dorville.
My only other question was if, and this is just a little, probably a little bit more of an aside. You know, the assembly site, the W B C, um have, has in the past proposed they fly over? Or, or tunnel under, et cetera, et cetera? Does it take this into account in any way, shape, or form? It, it, it may never happen, we know that.
I want to be careful. Um my colleague that I mentioned earlier, Joel Mann, he, I, me and him have both uh we've communicated with some engineers about the possibility of that and what options exist there. I think options still do exist there and it does take into account what is occurring with this project. I think that's probably all I can add.
I, I would add to that, but the, I, I know that I've had some discussions with the C I D director and they are very interested in pursuing, they, they did not pursue a grant as they had hoped, uh but they were still interested in pursuing engineering, uh or I'm sorry, scoping out uh potential of potential usability for crossing uh multiple places, not just that.
Okay. Oh my God. Thank you very much. Good work.
All right, we're moving along. Um Development Department, this is what you started on. This um first thing under Development Department is the P Z twenty twenty-two, ten twenty-one, seventeen fifty eighth street retaining wall variance. Um Council have any questions?
I'll have a question.
Well, no.
And for the applicant, and then Mr. Walker, can you put the conditions and what staff recommendations are on that? Mr. Walker, can you put the conditions and what staff recommendations are on that? So staff recommended decree is that the applicant shall not move any portion of the wood retainers in the public right-of-way. Okay, so that, so that, that's, so the condition, if we did, so obviously, I think the applicant is asking for a grant, so I don't know how we would remove it and grant the approval, but um, because it's probably a lot of that wall is in the right-of-way. Did you, did you have any idea of where that might be on that, on that wall?
And I can add a little clarity to that, that the intent is not to ask them to remove it. Uh the intent is to uh make sure that if uh any of the utilities come through, correct, at the time that it might be necessary to remove it, they may be required to remove that portion.
And we would not be required to build that back.
We would not be required.
If it happened that way.
Right.
Do you understand what that means?
Okay, so um this would not mean that we would need to remove that amount in the right way right now?
Correct.
Okay.
And then if and when somebody needed to come in there and replace it. You know, it may not ever happen, but that happened to replace something that we don't have to replace your non-conforming wall.
Right, right, okay, yeah. That, that's helpful.
Okay, and that is helpful, thank you. And then um so, okay, so that's, that's, that's all I wanted to know and make sure that the, we're not granting a variance on something that's not, we should have just taken it out in the first place. I did, I just didn't want to like be in this, uh that's what it kind of read to me, is that. All right, um yeah, that's really all I got, I mean.
I, I do want to ask you a question. Is it your intent to eventually stain that wall?
Um I don't know. We have wooden beams on our new home that are also the natural color, so it, it aligns, but yeah, you can see one of the beams on the front porch. Um and, and they tie right now, but I know that over time, the, the wall, there is beams on the home will start to, to get washed out, so we probably would stain it and, and would, would that require another, okay, yeah. If, if it starts looking bad, we would.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's really bright right now, but you can't, you can't really touch it for about six months and, and then it becomes less bright. However, it would be nice if it were, if it had a finish on it.
Right.
So in six months' time, and it wouldn't require very much.
And there's a retaining wall of, of another similar kind of construct, retaining wall under the neighbor's house there. It's like, that looks like it's pressure-treated. Same size, same dimension.
It would be.
Yeah.
And so
It's patina.
We, we had the discussion with Andrew about that because
That's another issue.
That's another issue and that's nothing to do with you and therefore, we're not building there. You sit up behind, um because of you.
Yeah.
No, no, and there's, and, and believe me, there, we are not trying to compete in any way, shape, or form. And we don't want to be, and we understand we're pretty different. Um I got nothing else to add.
Um, because that other one, I don't think they ever stained it. Is that what ours would look like? Years down the road?
Couple of years down the road.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's still bright.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and if you want to, uh if you try to stain over it when it goes gray, it comes out a different color than if you stained it at six months. When, when the chemicals have dried out, the wood's dried out and all of that kind of stuff. So you can choose your color, same thing with your columns and all that.
Yeah, yeah, that's how wide it was that.
Yeah, and it's not a big deal, you can do it yourself.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, so, and, and it also does prolong the light a little bit. That's in ground contact, so maybe not so much, but it certainly would prolong. And the only reason I'm making that question and, and ask is that it's really bright.
Yes, yes.
So it'd be nicer to blend it in with the landscape better.
Okay, yeah.
That's it from me. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um number two under Development Department is P Z twenty twenty-two, ten twenty-two, twenty-one thirty-five American Industrial Way sign variances.
I think I'm pretty clear, crystal clear on that. Okay?
The, the only thing that I want to say is that among the other I understand that you want two of the numbers, address numbers on that side of the building.
Well, no, one would be the two one three five that's already painted. The other one we're asking for would be a tenant name. It would be less than a cumulative.
But the proposed two wall signs on the east side, twenty-one thirty-five.
Guess I'm not following you. So the, so the two signs in red, you got it, in red. One would be the two one three five that's up there right now.
Okay.
And then the other one in the uh red box would be a tenant name.
Oh.
So it would just be one um address indicator and a tenant name.
Okay.
Because again, because the way the road curves,
Yeah.
you wouldn't know it's two one three five when you're, if you were coming up from Peach Street, which is why we wanted that on that. And then there's the larger mural on the um side, you know, the long side.
Right.
So no, 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 there would be just, there would just be on each side, one, two, one, three, five.
Okay, and I understand that you um that there has been a suggestion made that the neighborhood of the building is two one three five?
Well, that's the, that's the address.
But you're kind of using that as the neighborhood of the building, the two one three five building? And it goes to the Tables and Chairs building?
Yeah, I mean, we call it Tables and Chairs. It's been kind of the talk, but you know, when we had to apply for permits and whatnot, you had to give the street address and so.
Yeah, I only want to say two things and, and I, I understand that being the name of the building, I think that, you know, that's what we do. And I'd almost like to see that twenty-one thirty-five number painted up there to be a miniature version of the mural that you've got painted. I, if it would be readable.
Right, well, it's up there now.
Because it's, it's what it might be.
It's a, yeah, uh the mural is kind of iconic.
Yeah, and then that would also tie into the icon.
Those numbers were original numbers, they just restored them, they were already on there.
Oh, they were, okay. All right, well, never mind. You know your trees are gonna grow in front.
Pardon?
Your trees are gonna grow in front of them.
I know, well.
So what, so what, so the name of the building is what?
Well, I mean, the name of the building is, is two one three five, I mean, it's the street address. But we do have a Tables and Chairs sign that we want a tenant to use somewhere, maybe on, on the inside, or we just don't know yet. Just because we just don't know what, what a tenant's gonna want to do, but that's right. I mean, we honestly, what we typically try to do
I gave you guys this building and this. But so the longer sign that is yet to be, is still gonna be another twenty-one thirty-five?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so what is that we're gonna do?
A tenant name.
A ten, okay, that's all I wanted to.
Yeah, it's a tenant name, yep. And now we have to come for approval for that sign and whether or not they would want to mimic the cool mural, they don't, they'll know, but um
That's
they'll have their font and logo and whatnot, so.
It might be kind of readable. All right, that, that's all I was, I just was curious about that.
Yeah, just each, there's only one, two, one, three, five on each side.
Well, this was being explained to me, the way that it was pictured was very hard to be comprehended, so I'm just now starting to absorb really what this all means.
Cool.
Um I'm good. Anybody else?
On the, on the monument side,
Yeah.
I, I know that the code requires it to be about fifty feet, and I would put it in the parking lot or in the lobby if it was about fifty feet, but is there, it just seems like, still it seems like an odd location for it.
Well, there's really not a great spot, honestly, and I mean, that area
But if you could put it anywhere you want, where would you put it?
I mean, kind of there because you can see it really from heading down and up, so it's just sort of a weird curve, as we know.
Hey, if you don't want it in another location, then neither do I.
I mean, it's from that angle, I mean, we haven't really fully laid it out yet, but that is showing more of a, you know, perpendicular to the building. So you wouldn't pick it up until you're a little bit further down, but
What if it were perpendicular to the curve instead, so you could see it coming in?
Angle being, yeah. I'm, I don't see an, I don't see an issue with that at all. Like I said, we haven't what she, what she saw on those images is basically all we've gotten to so far because we haven't submitted, so I'm dealing with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm
Yeah, I mean, believe me, we want it to be visible, we're spending money to build it, so we want it, we want it to be, uh as will a tenant or tenants have their name on there, so we're totally open to that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to see that project.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, we are too. We hopefully will see a V O in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Okay, item number three under the Development Department, we have the resolution to amend the future development map, S O U map in the comprehensive plans.
And this is based on, and, and this is should Council, um, move forward with, this is directly related to uh the item uh under second reads, which is uh P Z two thousand twenty-two, nine nine, three, Shandley Town Home. Um and so
Should Council Project.
The B D
Drive.
B D Drive Project. So should Council, uh, allow that project to move forward, um to approve this resolution, um based on the analysis and the standard criteria in the U D O's that have already been in the O L of this, um so the Council wishes to deny this project, it would um, this resolution would need to be denied, therefore, they're related in that way.
And that would, and that would be from current or after the
Um actually, the future land use map would need to be considered before, considering the
Gotcha, gotcha. But they're linked.
But they are linked, yes.
We are not working on the first read. This is going to, if we
This will be going to second read.
Be going to second read.
Um so this resolution will stay in the Development Department, uh where it is on the agenda, but be considered on Tuesday night. Whereas the second read uh of the rezoning in D C I will be at the second read portion of the agenda tomorrow.
All right.
Or Tuesday night, sorry.
Tuesday night.
Are they back to back or they kind of spaced out?
Very spaced out.
Gotcha.
But it is a change to the future land use, uh changing that area um from mixed use to the intensity residential.
All right. Item number four.
Uh this is uh amendments, chapter eighteen of the uh Code of Ordinances, vacant property registry. This is act, uh text amendment from the fourth of the year. Um and uh with this request, this ordinance would amend uh the property, amend chapter eighteen uh to require owners or agents of the owner of vacant or, and foreclosed uh pro- real property to register with the city and provide official information for contacting the party responsible for that structure, uh that vacant property. Uh registration means filing a registration statement with the Department of Planning and Inspection Services. Uh if, if those forms would be filed with the planning department and the registry, it would be on record as to who the official contact for that vacant property is. Um uh these were new requirements added to the code, uh where the owner files a registration statement within fourteen days of vacating the property. Um any change of ownership uh would also trigger a new registration of the property uh with the new uh information. Um vacant real property shall comply with all the codes of the city. Um and at the time of filing, the owner shall pay a one hundred dollar fee uh to be registered uh for that property. Um it remains valid for twelve months from the date of the filing uh and uh is required to be renewed uh each successive twelve-month period after. It addresses all foreclosed properties as well, uh and anyone who violates this uh article would uh be set to appear in the municipal court. And the purpose of, of this is of course to have those contacts uh readily available should we find uh the need to reach out.
So would examples of that be the gas station that used to be a car wash on Peach Street Boulevard and Shandley Dunwood, the one by the Arby's, that's vacant?
Neat.
And then obviously the old bistro site right out front, it's all vacant. In fact, stuff like that, that, so those will all be, that's considered vacant.
Vacant property, residential property as well.
Gotcha.
So um rental properties, tenant moves out, landlords in the middle cleaning up the property up, will be living for thirty days.
That would not be considered vacant if a landlord actively working on property.
Okay.
When does it become, I guess, because that's, that's the, that's the trip we're gonna get, I'm sure.
Yeah, like if, if it's on the market, it'd be rented, but no one's living there, and it's empty for three months.
Or if it's, if there's no activity there for more than fourteen days, then it's considered
Activity is the trigger. Okay.
Activity by someone either living there, ownership, et cetera.
So for a piece of property that is, the owner still claims that it's his property, but he doesn't live there, and he periodically, once a year, comes and does something and says, oh, I'm still here, but there's rats and stuff like that? Is that considered a vacant property, unoccupied?
If, if, we'll, we'll put it this way, if, uh, code enforcement police arrive at the property and find no one, can't get in touch with anyone, it's not easy to get in touch with anyone, and they're not able, uh, you know, the purpose of this is, uh, for them to be able to find someone and address a, a question immediately.
All right.
Um, so an owner who, uh, is not there, um, and is a vacant property, uh, should, would do well to either register that property or have those conversations with, uh, code enforcement and police prior to, uh, any issue arise.
Okay.
Think it's a little open ended. I think you're gonna get some challenges, but, you know.
Then a lot of it.
I just, uh, I mean, definitely if, you know, I can see them going out and saying, this, your property appears to be vacant, you have fourteen days to apply.
Don't give them anything to you.
Or something like that, you know, or something like that, because then, you know, if they obviously, that's, if your guy doesn't show up for it, he's gonna, he's not gonna see that notice stuck on his door. He's not gonna say anything. But if he walks in the next three days later, he will see it. So I, I don't know. I just, I just see, I, I. We've had other similar things like this.
They'll have the chance to go up front of municipal judge and give their case. So that is, they, they can argue that, judge can make their determination, and we'll move on.
I think this is a great first step. We might learn some stuff along the way, but this is the first time that we've actually addressed this. And therefore, and I think that, that the thought process behind that is pretty well, is pretty comprehensive. So, like I said, I think this is a great first step, and we're, we're, we've still got some work to do.
And the fee to find is that? The registration's a hundred dollars.
We're gonna have all of his cousins.
The, the registration fee's a hundred dollars, so it's not like it's paid.
No, it's not.
Just go ahead and put the name and turn it in and it'll be done, right?
Yeah. And then, and it is something. Uh-oh, that signal. Okay, we're done with this one? Um, all right. Now we are under item D. Carrie, you're dying to come up here. Renewal of the speed detection permit?
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Secretary of Transit, Council. Uh, the first item we got before you is the, uh, bill of speed detection permit. Um, to authorize the mayor to sign a letter requesting, uh, request on the Department of Public Safety to renew the public, uh, police department's speed detection permits that expired on December twenty-first, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, based on chapter eighty-six, um, section fifty-seven, the council, um, uh, has a city ordinance that establishes the maximum speed limit is twenty-five, block city, uh, G-DOT. Actually, it says the speed out, the speed for the state law, and they require a sign from the, sign letter from the mayor and to renew our speed detection device to you.
Thank you for the short version.
Absolutely. Second, we're.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you?
No, that was, that's them.
You wanna talk a little bit?
No.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Carrie, this first.
Yeah, I, I'm just a bit confused at the documentation we have in our packet here. It says to be, uh, pursuing to the city ordinance chapter, then we have all these, uh, traffic laws that follow that for each street. Is that necessary for, uh, the renewal of the speed detection permit?
Yes, well, it's outline all the information, distribute the information that each street, the streets, um, in the packet have, have identified the streets that have been approved. G-DOT has approved each street for, uh, so authorizes us to run the speed detection on those streets. So that's what I suggested.
So it's a, it's a, back in the old days, where we used to have small towns, you had speed traps and all that, that's, so kind of G-DOT kind of got involved. Now, it's kind of regulated where those devices can be operated and they can be wherever could, and that's just a throwback from the old days. Sins of our fathers.
I just thought everybody was just saying, apparently on my street, you can't park on it, according to this, so.
I mean, there's no parking signs present somewhere on the street.
Is that what that refers to?
Yes.
I got it.
And you can request, by the way, to have them removed.
I think they remove themselves at some point.
I mean, it's, that's, you know, that's a, that's sort of a neighborhood thing.
Yeah, but anyway, yeah. That's good. I just, I just curious. Thank you for that, as a.
All right, thank you. Um, well, number two, I guess you're sticking around?
Yes, ma'am. The second one will be for the approval of the budgetary, uh, resolution. Um, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two budget was authorized in our state, uh, state confiscated accounts and our federal state confiscated accounts, twenty-five thousand dollars. We're asking for, uh, we're asking for the approval to increase, uh, amend the budget to add forty thousand dollars to the state and forty thousand dollars to the federal.
So can I just understand that the twenty-five thousand has been depleted and in each fund, and there's an additional forty thousand in each fund?
Uh, yes. So in our state and our accounts in the state and our account in the, uh, federal confiscated, there's additional ones, but it has to be authorized to move forward into the line.
And this doesn't have anything to do with code enforcement?
No.
I'm just kidding. Um, okay.
How about the golf course murders? Does that have anything to do with that?
Oh, no.
We got some money from that.
Oh, we.
They did that, but we confiscated it.
Oh, because you're resident in the city, that's okay. Yeah, that's right.
Right.
I'll keep you together.
All questions and jokes have been exhausted. And number three, surveillance camera contract.
I'm actually surveillance contract, uh, so there have been a need, uh, for surveillance cameras that's, uh, that we're putting in the for air trailers as well as our park. And as we begin to progress into the downtown area, um, staff has went out and, and staffed different companies to see the best, um, technology is out there. So we've identified a company and request them, uh, to sign a contract to purchase twelve solar powered surveillance cameras.
Those, they, they look pretty, um, intrusive.
Yes.
How bad are they?
So what, it's probably in the packet that I didn't read.
John, John.
What, 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 what is their capabilities? I mean, can they, is it, is it real time monitor? Or is it just recorded? Is it two-way conversation, any, anything like that? I mean, I know they have the whole gamut.
Yes, so they, so they are able to, first, like you said, they're more of their, their solar power. Yes, they can, they're used through an app. We can utilize the app, so we can, um, actually go real time to view when we decide, when we are able to expand in that area, one of the divisions of the city manager, uh, and his vision to expand into a, uh, real crime center. Um, so it will be, uh, able to transition into that as well. Um, it's able to record, we're able to record information to go back and re, recover information or evidence that, that is gained from it. So, yes, it's, it's, it's first, how to, it would be more, more times.
And how, how, um, what's the, like, I guess, resolution or, I mean, should be capable of reading license plates or actually be able to get a, if, I know people hide themselves and stuff, but if they do look at the camera, sometimes I've seen it where they look direct at it, you still can't tell who they are.
There is high definition, there's high definition, as well as is able to, to record, uh, record and visually see at night.
How long is that, that data, recorded data stored?
Um, I have that information, but I'm, you know, with me, but yes, it is. Because it's on, it's web-based, we install for X amount of time. So we can go back into the cloud and pull it back out.
That's good. Okay. Obviously, the information, some of that information we should have out there so people know if they had it, it's recorded three days ago, or if it's just gone in two or whatever. I'm sure it's probably at least seven days. Most of those kind of cameras are at least, at least seven days.
Yes, at least. And the majority of them are. It depends on the size of, of, of the server or the cloud we have and, uh, basically the.
Right.
Yeah, the information.
It roughly is seven days.
Seven.
But if you needed to have that information available longer, then you can ask it.
Yes, yeah, we can, we can actually have them, uh, extend it over, you might put it down and it starts somewhere else.
Okay. All right. Is that it? Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Um, nothing on parks and recreation, nothing on finance, public works, general service agreement for traffic signal maintenance.
Good evening. Christopher Ford, the group of it works, um, speak real briefly about, uh, the general service agreement for traffic signal maintenance. All right. I'd rather make it to approve the general service agreement for traffic signal maintenance for Sunbelt Traffic. Uh, the city has been with, uh, Sunbelt since two thousand eighteen for on-call services, scheduled maintenance for all the traffic signals within the city. Um, the following service they offer is a twenty-five hour on-call service, traffic signal maintenance for repairs, congestion, signal maintenance repairs, and schools on. Uh, public work utilized Sunbelt to, uh, preventive maintenance and routine upgrades for the city traffic signals, spam wire captains. We do use their on-call services for emergency purposes. Um, public work staff is requesting a one-year extension for the agreement. It is a fifteen percent increase for the hourly rates material due to the rise in cost and labor material. That's it.
So, did I give you about your phone number for?
Y'all are gonna do a robbery.
Yeah. I'm happy to do that. So the only question I've, uh, as being somebody who's out in the city, and I'm sure Jimmy could probably tell you a few, two, some of the, some of the pedestrian crosswalk buttons don't seem to work like they should. So I would request that, I guess, Sunbelt or somebody perform, like, an audit to just go around and push all the buttons and make sure they work in both directions like they should. Um, I know that when you come from Peach Street Road to go over to, like, uh, Discount Tires, it never gets you a crosswalk. It just, just. That's a little bit, that's a harder road to, uh, wing it, you know? You got, uh, so you got cars coming behind you and you got, um, obviously four lanes of traffic going the other way, so. Uh, there's other ones around, but I, they're not noteworthy, but I, I would imagine there's probably multiple where the button just doesn't work. It's got, it's dirt, needs to be cleaned or whatever.
All right.
Somebody needs to go check them all.
I'll be happy.
That's it?
Um, can we assume that either next year we're gonna be asking for this again, or is it gonna be shopping for any provider for twenty twenty-four?
Um, well, currently we're trying to come up with, or something, but we're trying to do a lot of in-house, um, maintenance. We can, uh, take care of some of this stuff ourselves. So there's a couple of, you know, to kind of expand on that. Um, the cost of materials has gone up quite a lot. So we're looking, um, instead of paying the, you know.
Cost plus basic.
Cost plus, we're looking at actually buying that equipment and storing it on-site. Um, we have to do a good job of storing it. Um, and, and so we're preparing a place for that. Uh, but, um, so that will help, uh, but again, you still need the labor in some of these situations, uh, especially with the, uh, the lights, the red lights themselves. So, um, we are looking at what we can do versus what others can do, but, uh, we will most likely be asking you to, uh, with going out with a bid at some time. There aren't a lot of companies that do this, because there was Sunbelt for a reason. They respond very quickly. Um, and, uh, we've been very satisfied with their service, but, uh, we will probably be going out for our, for the service.
I don't notice that there's a, is there an annual fee or is this, or is it just kind of, it's just an hourly, oh, it's an hourly rate?
Yeah.
So we call them a lot, we, we get a lot.
Yeah, right.
So the last thing, just to make sure, I understand it, but make sure, but this is not for programming or anything. This is just change in lightbulb kind of stuff. Switching widgets, contacts, or whatever.
Right, that's right.
So if somebody has a complaint about a signal not, the timing being wrong, that's not a Sunbelt, no question.
Right.
That's fine.
I'm good for my side.
All right. Um, thank you. Nothing under economic development, nothing under community engagement department. Anybody, anybody with, um, any information from our boards, authorities, and committees?
Hmm.
Okay, under city attorney, we're going to have a first read of the amendment for vacant property registry. We're going to have, oh, that's our only first read. Then, um, we will have second reads for massage spa establishment ordinance amendment, um, text amendment to the UDO, the Shandly Town Home Submit's FLU map, rezoning DCI. And that's it. Did I miss anything?
Do we want to have any, do we typically have a discussion about the first read and decide if we're gonna move it to first read, or is this particular one we've done not gonna be?
That is correct.
Uh, we just talked, we have talked about it, because we have, do we need some sort of acknowledgement if we're moving to first read or?
Would you like to move this to first read?
I would. I didn't know. I just kind of, I mean.
That would, that would.
Are we in agreement to move it to first read? I think, I think we can just do a consensus. Just do it head on. Head on. Bobbed it. Okay, so that will move to first read. And then the second reads are what they are.
Yes.
And we'll get it. Under mayor and council, nobody wants to do anything, so that's cool. So now it's, it's the fun part, citizen comments. Uh, make your way to the stand if you got anything you want to say.
And if Paul Stowall doesn't come to the microphone, he's in trouble. No, come on up.
Remember, if you're talking to us, we can.
Come on up.
I want to hear from you.
Who are you? What are you doing here? Why you, why, why do we want to know who you are?
Okay, I wasn't expecting to be called out like this. Uh, thanks, Paul Stowall, uh, Atlink Drive resident. Thank you. Um, well, I'm running for the city council seat this November to finish off its remaining term, but, uh, I don't really have any questions.
Very lucky, you can answer.
Anyway, yes.
We don't get to ask questions.
You have opposition? We can't ask that?
Yeah.
Like a question?
That's why I was looking to city staff, but they were gonna ask me.
She didn't say that.
I, I did too. I said, we can't talk, we can't talk back to you.
I'm picking on you.
Entirely a model.
I'm totally picking on you.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
You have been baptized by fire. Um, I do believe that we have an executive session for.
You have an executive session for personal matter, and all this, and litigation.
What he said, so.
Anybody want to make a question?
Motion, there is an executive session.
Motion, second.
For, for this, especially personal matters and litigation.
Second.
I want to put some favor.
We'll get that one next.
All right, you guys, we will reconvene to end our meeting after we have that through.